And you can, and the mic just gave us.
Yes.
Another newspaper.
Yes.
Okay, I get one of those.
He just gave it to us, just the, it's the. Changes to anything.
First one, I do, this is the, the back of that law. The law's saying, they're not taking all these.
I mean, it's insane, there's just so much.
There has to be, I mean, apartments count about one to apartment, most of them.
Well, they do have, it's in here, there are, look at the other trees and stuff, so they don't take that out long enough. It'd be nice to keep them, like, as well as. Yeah, yeah, these are long.
We don't worry about that.
It's like, it's like, we have a lot of time here.
And all the reason that who it is, they're trying to squeeze too much in.
Yeah, and that's what happens, they try to, townhouses are like, straight from there.
Well, at least we took them, basically, down when we had that audience.
Oh, that, no, that's fine, I just meant.
Yeah, I know, I was like.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting, uh, we'll start with the approval of the minutes from our March seventeenth meeting. Uh, are there any questions or additions?
I will move to approve them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. There you are, where'd you go?
Sorry, alright, at the April meeting, the town council held a public hearing on the FY twenty-six budget and setting the property tax rate. And, um, we passed the budget at that meeting. And we happily were able to maintain the same property tax rate that we have for a number of years, twelve cents per month, that's our value. We also have a public hearing on our twenty-twenty-five coverage of land use plan. Uh, and we also passed that, um, at least at the, um, unionist vote. And we've been working on that hard, and I know that was in that committee, and a number of people getting involved in it, and thank you all for your volunteer time. And we also, um, heard the case ten, one hundred dash fifteen C, that is a town run two, phase three. That you all send a favorable recommendation for through old in January, and the council, uh, also approved phase three. And that is a town.
Any questions? Any question? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. We start with case number forty-three dash twenty-one. Saint Mary's assisted living and memory care facility site plan permit extension. Uh, they're requesting, from the planning commission, approval per chapter one fifty-five dash one oh nine for a permit for an extension of twelve months.
Thank you, members. The, uh, something property is just located down there at the intersection of, uh, Seannings Church Road and Maryland Route five. And, and it's that, uh, property there of twenty point five one acres. The property received final site plan and agricultural approval on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three by, from the planning commission. The owners were issued a grading permit on February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, and a demolition permit, uh, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, to remove three dilapidated structures and remove the debris from the site. Uh, per town chap, uh, town municipal code, chapter one fifty-five, one oh nine, time limits for permits and approval extensions amended five twenty-two thousand eight by ordinance number one thirty-five and one forty-nine. Any zoning product, building permit, concept approval, preliminary approval, or final approval shall become invalid if the authorized used approval or construction for which the permit or approval was issued is not commenced within twelve months of that date of issuance for residential and two years for commercial. There must be evidence of ongoing construction activity for the permit to remain valid. So I went out there and I did an inspection, uh, after the, uh, demo permit was pulled and they demoed the two dilapidated buildings, uh, established similar as you control and stabilize the site after that was done. So, in my mind, they met that standard of actually doing work on the site. So, uh, action needed today, the applicant is requesting site development plan permit extension for twelve months. The planning com, the zoning commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny. So I haven't, if you have any questions, I can answer them, or?
Or are they gonna just wait another twelve months before they start working, is that?
Correct, so they're just asking for an extension of that, the permit, to do work.
Well, love to.
Continue work.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I guess we can take a motion.
I'll move to approve the request for case forty-three twenty-one. The Saint Mary's assisted living and memory care facility site development plan permit extension per town municipal code, chapter one fifty-five, one oh nine, for an additional twelve months.
All right, one second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Our next order of business is case number two dash twenty-five. Leonard Town Apartments Concept Site Development Plan. A request for concept plan approval to proceed with final design. The proposed apartment building is located on the west side of Courthouse Drive at the intersection of Fenwick Street. Tax map one thirty-three, parcel four forty.
Thank you. So the applicant, as you said, is requesting concept approval, and I have a few connection, uh, uh, corrections. Uh, your, uh, staff report, uh, references condominium. This is not a condominium, it is an apartment complex, or apartment building. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that because in three different places I have the word condominium. And, uh, it should be, uh, apartments, and that was clarified this afternoon with a conversation with the, uh, owner and or consultant. So the twenty-two unit residential apartment that is proposed on the property now formerly owned by Harry and Jeanette Norris. The, uh, proposed building is to parallel Courthouse Drive and be set back from the right away approximately thirty-four feet. The property consists of forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight square foot of land zone commercial business with a critical area overlay designation of intensely developed area IDA. The proposed apartment is a total of three stories with a ground floor proposed to also have underground parking at, uh, the ground level. The proposed floor area is thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square foot. Per town municipal code, chapter one fifty-five, the proposed twenty-two apartments is required to provide two parking spots or spaces per unit which equates to forty-four parking spaces. This would include two eighty-eight compliant handicap spaces. The proposed plan reflects nineteen standard spaces plus one handicap outside and twenty-three standard spaces plus one handicap in the garage area. Currently, the proposed plan is reflecting stormwater, uh, outfall onto the adjacent town property across from Courthouse Drive with a proposed grass swale. In the comment letter provided to the consultant on February twenty-first from the town planning department, the consultant was instructed to provide stormwater management easements on the town property and, uh, the planning department indicated that this stormwater management easement on the town proper, excuse me, the stormwater management and outfall would need to be presented to Leonard Town Town Council for approval. Based on additional research, the town at this time does not want additional waters being conveyed onto the town property. The town already has a water issue with drainages to the wastewater treatment plant facility in which the town has spent a lot of resources to mitigate. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the planning and zoning department to provide, uh, the H, AT-H HTB storm drain pipe from the proposed inlet one eleven on Parkinett Avenue to the proposed inlet one oh seven on Courthouse Drive. Uh, the water that's coming down Park Drive is pounding there at that intersection, but there's already a ditch that parallels Courthouse Drive, and eventually that water goes that way anyway, and I'm just proposing that same amount of water continue the way it's going currently. After the planning department reviewed, the owner consultant will be required to address, uh, forest conservation per municipal code eighty dash five, uh, the forest conservation application requirements, and personally making application after the effective date of January first nineteen ninety-three for subdivision or local agency project plan approval. A grading permit or sediment control permit, or a sediment control permit for an area of land forty thousand square foot or greater. So they'll need to provide a forest and delineation and forest conservation plan to the planning office. Based on the propos, proposed use, the town has estimated that the proposed apartment will require twenty-two EDUs prior to being issued a used occupancy permit. This estimate, the estimate is based on not known exactly how many bedrooms each unit will have. One and two bedroom units require less than one EDU per, per unit. The wastewater treatment plant expansion is, is that we, we consider substantial completion, and the town council plans to repeal ordinance one thirty-two, which, uh, basically says that we can't award any EDUs until that's repealed. That requires new projects to be approved by the town council for, uh, new EDUs. The project has received concept approval from Saint Mary's County Public Works and Transportation on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and Saint Mary's County Soul Conservation District on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. The town of Leonard Town Co, Capital Projects Department and Leonard Town Planning Department uh, issued a concept approval March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for meeting the criteria in which the, uh, ordinance states. Uh, I have included, uh, preliminary architectural drawings, uh, in the submission, however, that, it's not a required, uh, submission, nor have they been sent to the state fire marshal, uh, for review. That's just to kind of give you a picture of what these, this apartment building is gonna look like. The applicant is requesting concept site plan approval for case number two dash twenty-five. Leonard Town Apartments, the planning and zoning commission can vote to approve, approve with conditions, delay or deny a, deny a decision. Now, I have the consultant and the, um, owner here, and they have a, a presentation that they would, uh, like to give. And then I would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay.
No, that was a, oh, you were just speaking from our seats, or?
No, you ought to stand up and come.
Stand up.
You might wanna point out something over there.
Um, I won't do that, I'll let, let Jack. And, um, I see Val and I, and I'm the owner of Courthouse Drive LLC that is putting the project together and, and filed plans, and, uh, Jay Hopson is our engineer, he'll speak also to some of the issues that, uh, Mike brought up. But basically, um, Courthouse Drive project will consist of twenty-three luxury apartments, they are apartments, not condos. Uh, located within easy walk distance to this sort of downtown building, we'll have covered apartment on the ground floor, it's not really underground, it's just a building on ground floor, and then there's two, two levels of apartments above that. So really, it's kind of like, looks like a three-story building, uh, from Courthouse Drive. The, um, uh, we'll have, uh, correctly above the covered parking, the two additional floors, eleven units each. Twenty-two apartments will be, will be six two bedrooms and, uh, sixteen one bedrooms. So, that goes into complete, uh, how to compute that EDUs. And it is accessible by elevator for two floors. And then, almost three larger, the field of older tenants who appreciate the added space and proximity to Main Street and Leonard Town. So we really expect it to be more overcrowded in this building, with a number of, here, for kids. Um, we purposely designed the building to have pedestrian entrance and presence on Fenwick Street near the town's downtown district. The sign crosses the street, so we're coming out close to that from the side of our building on the second floor, so the tenants can just walk out. The, uh, the residential floors over to Fenwick, and then go into downtown. Otherwise, they have to go out on the ground floor, walk all the way around, come up the hill. So it just makes it nicer access for pedestrian traffic to walk into town. We think that's a good asset for the town as well as us. Uh, we anticipate the apartments to attract older residents, mostly from St. Mary's, from one of these, uh, elevator building proximity to the store downtown, where residents will have additional foot traffic to the assortment, which will, existing, uh, restaurants and shops will certainly welcome. Along with our elevated walkway entrance off of Fenwick Street, second floor entry for residents, we will have extensive landscaping to make our entrance appealing, and residents of the town can enjoy, uh, as they walk up and down Fenwick Street. And I'll let Jack, he was talking about that one as well. So anyway, we're looking, uh, forward to doing the project, I think we talked to the show and figured out the sixteen EDUs that were, that were needed based on what our unit was. And, uh, it's also quite expensive, if you go to the town's rates, or some of the highest as far as, uh, uh, basically, tilting charges. And, uh, so it's gonna be a big contribution to the town's service system, with these EDUs, we're paying this money. And we also, uh, the building is an expensive building to build, because it's small. While engineering fees, architect fees and stuff, they go into a small building, it's just gonna be more expensive. But we think it will attract older people that will pay the rents and make the building worthwhile. We do need the town's health, though, things that are costly, the infrastructure, uh, we really appreciate the town with its all. All options to help us keep the stormwater plant as it is. I know Mike just mentioned some conditions on that. But, I'll let, then I'll let Jay speak to that one, if I'm not here for the argument. But anyway, that's our project, we think it's a nice project, we think it'll really add to the town, and, uh, we're excited to do it. And, uh, our experience is, uh, we've done a lot of development, mostly in Walworth. I have some apartments that are right between the, uh, are right by the, uh, those.
Very clean.
Very, very, those apartments, we passed the very clean, there's like five townhomes, and there's apartments between there. Uh, we bought those, um, six years ago, we had. And we put a lot of improvement into those changes to make them nicer. We really dressed up the townhomes as best we could, made that a nice look for the town when you come in Washington Street. Uh, we also own, own the RV park, uh, when we look out road. And we put a lot of money in that to, uh, so our basic philosophy is build nice things, and we don't have to turn over, uh, you keep, they keep a rental. So, any questions for me?
Yeah, um, what, what's the size, square footage of the, of the individual apartments, and, and what are you anticipating to rent them for?
Yeah, they're averaging, uh, it's around eight hundred to eleven hundred, which is pretty good size, so, uh, and we're looking, now, this is, you know, two years out, so, when I quote a number, that's not today's number. And we're thinking at least around, uh, twenty-two fifty, twenty-three hundred on a one bedroom, and probably about twenty-five, twenty-six hundred on to the, uh, larger units, and we are gonna do, uh, concrete floors between the units, so that, that we, noise attenuate it. And, um, and, and for net openings, so it'll be nice looking.
So if you park under the building, then where are the stairs that go up?
Well, there's an elevator.
Oh, okay, that's why we're.
There's an elevator, uh, you can walk over to, or you can make the stairs.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine hauling groceries right in there.
No, but, yeah.
Okay.
We think elevator buildings, I'll make, you know, I'll make your future.
Okay.
Uh, because people, you know, my age, you know, where this is, got one of the necessary stairs, of course, so we start thinking about a lot harder.
Yes.
Uh, I think you'll get more information from these guys, so I'll, I'll turn it over to them. Uh, Jack, once you're ready.
Good afternoon, I'm, yes, Jack, we were, uh, not sure if I could do this, and, uh, I wonder if correctly, but, but, if it's on quarter by eighteen, so we're with, uh,
I would like to.
We're gonna play this up. Has Mr. Valentine, uh, said, this is, uh, an apartment complex, or an apartment building that is, uh, immediately adjacent to downtown. It is between, it is on Courthouse Drive between Fenwick and Park Avenue. Uh, it is twenty-two units, it is, uh, two levels of residential above a single story of parking garage and common, uh, common area functions. Uh, on that garage level, on the south side, uh, when you look at our whole plan package, we have our common area functions, courtyards, we have more expansive landscaping, uh, along Park, Park Road to the for the residential townhouses and units that are over there, and slightly more intensive development along Fenwick. Our accesses to the parking garage are from Courthouse to try to minimize traffic going into and out of town on Fenwick. The entrance is very close to the intersection of Courthouse Drive and Fenwick. You can just see it right, uh, around the corner. Uh, we, we have two entries on two levels. The, the garage level, you can drive in or walk into a common lower lobby, which you see there on the floor plan, uh, with access to the elevator. Uh, each floor will, each floor has two fire stairs, or, uh, in addition to the elevator, so access to all three levels will be by stair and elevator. Uh, there is ADA parking, you can see on that partial plan, there's a ADA space right in the garage level that is, uh, very close to the elevator, and for the surface parking that we provided on the south end of the site, we, uh, we have an ADA parking space as well. Part of, uh, our objective was to play on the whole notion of, uh, the gateway signs and the gateway concept to downtown that, that you all, uh, had introduced. So, we're picking up the arch element in the top of the, the building for the gateway. We, uh, oftentimes call it, uh, Courthouse Gateway as an apartment complex to, to get the whole idea that is, uh, you're, you're, one of your important, uh, entry to the town elements for your image and, uh, of, of the town. Uh, we, we have tried to make the pedestrian trip by anyone that is using Fenwick more interesting with, uh, a bridge that matches grade at the sidewalk, the town sidewalk, uh, and goes over to our second level entrance. That bridge is going to go over a landscape feature, probably a dry stream bed with a fountain and a small courtyard, uh, below. So people can appreciate the, that landscape treatment as they're walking, uh, up and down Fenwick. Or as they're entering the building, they can just take a look and, and, uh, see what's happening. Again, on the courthouse side, at the, the intersection close to Fenwick, we, we have a plaza. And then at the opposite end of the project, when you start to look at the site plans, that's where we have outdoor activity areas and a, and a common space. With respect to the building exterior, uh, the units are basically, uh, lots of windows and sliding doors or front doors to private balconies. They may, uh, maybe shallow or deeper, depending upon the, the side of the building and the exposure, uh, and, and the treatment. We're proposing using, uh, on the Fenwick side, and as an accent element, uh, some, a project, not, not brick, but a masonry-like project that we've used, uh, in the past. I think you probably have them in some of the town buildings, it's a nichia, it's a veneer product. We're doing that in part to reduce the overall weight of the building, and because it, uh, it's conflictly a price to brick masonry and things like that. And it gives us a lot of opportunities in terms of colors, uh, whether we want a stone, a stone-like material. And then we're also going to be proposing, uh, using a metal siding, uh, on a, in addition to that. This is just a metal siding product, uh, the color scheme we would probably look is something closer to the red. So, the areas where, uh, we're going to get, uh, potential damage or anything like that, or, or close to the ground, we use our nichia, which is similar to a masonry product in the areas that, uh, we aren't worried about people or equipment touching the side of the building, we're using the metal siding products. Again, uh, uh, we're trying to come up with a solution that is forward-facing for the town of Leonard Town, where we're providing parking as part of the structure of the building to reduce impervious areas on the site. Our patio areas, we're looking at, at more pervious type pavements. Uh, we've, and Jay Hopson, the civil engineer, will address it. The majority, if not all of our, uh, site-generated water, we manage on-site with a series of rain gardens and fire retention areas, conservation landscapes. The water that we are rerouting on the site is coming from the town, and if you look at the existing condition plan, you can see a fairly substantial, uh, outfall right at the west side of the property. So those are things that we're trying to do in terms of improving water quality, holding, holding water as long as we can, taking those features and turning them into something that we, uh, use in rain gardens or conservation landscapes. Uh, we understand that, you know, that, that we will be doing substantial replanting on the site, uh, or force in terms of a minimum width of the, and depth of the site and the areas that are really length, level and buildable for us to maximize that as our development area. We're forced to, to do a little grading on the embankment there that has some of the more, the larger trees, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions or, uh, or your comments, or, or make way for the civil engineer, Jay Hopson.
Why don't we listen to what he has to say, and then we'll.
Of course, giving, I'll need these materials up here.
One, one question, do you have a, a nice rendering of the, of the long end, the Courthouse Drive, uh, view?
Uh, we have, we just did a composite that showed the, that critical in, intersection, but, you know, we do have building elevations on our line drawing package for all, every side of the building, as well as floor plans, I believe, for the, the typical residential floor and garage level.
That, that was submitted in our package view.
Yeah, I saw the line drawn.
Just a mic and not, yeah.
Yes. My name is Jay Hopson, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I've got a, a brief PowerPoint, and then I'll, uh, sit down for questions. Uh, this is the site, uh, it's about one acre. There's an outfall, I guess I can do it from this one.
Yeah, we have it, we have.
Got one layer.
We have printed it out.
Exactly. There's a, there's an existing outfall up here with, uh, it's an eighteen-inch color, it goes out into Fenwick Street.
Oh, that's better, thank you.
Uh, we situated the building here, took, like, uh, Jack was saying, to maximize this flat area at the bottom. At the rear, we have a slope coming down to create a ditch, and then it goes back up to the second floor of the building. So, that third floor, the, the first floor in the rear will be buried. Uh, parking space is on-site, then there's three, uh, five parallel spaces on-site, and then the twenty-three. twenty-three spaces indoor. Small patio area here, which will retain the law, this will be kind of substantial back here about eighteen. We have two small rain gardens up here to provide T S D treatment for stormwater. And then we have a vivid issue right down here in the corner with the pond area. There's a, quite a good water coming down this Park Avenue and then ponds up right down here. This is the, what the look of the rain garden that I anticipate is out in front of the building. That'll pond about a half foot of water and save that most of the time. This is the pond area down at the corner of the intersection of Courthouse Drive. What it does is pond up there and I think the basin's grown up so much it's blocking that way out. What we propose to do to fix that is to provide a, now, and we are getting credit from grass well here, I'm not trying to tell you we're not getting anything out of this. But in order to outfall this pipe over here, we have to tear up Fenwick Street to drop the storm drain. This, this outfall is very low. It's actually at the existing ground level. So I can't get this water from that pipe down to that pipe. It has to go that way. When I look, when I do the analysis of that, this is what you're looking at. Right now, everything over here comes down to our lot, ponds up, floods and then goes out over time and ponds up down here on the road. The green here is the drainage area that contributes to the outfall down by the street and playing. What we want to do is take a small swell here and cut this water off and put it over here. This is the only portion of our lot. The red is all the drains of that area. Everything else will go to the cover of Fenwick Street. Now, I understand you guys have put in a lot of money. There's issues down there. But I've asked you to allow us to look at that as, to see what we can do to mitigate the problem down there and see if we can do that outfall, do some improvements. And I, I do believe that'll, that'll serve the town well with the fixing up the pond issue down there. So this grass swell will be a four-foot wide flat bottom swell. It actually stays in the right way until we get down here to the bottom to turn it down and tie it into this concrete wall right here. Water and sewer will connect up at the front of the building. This is the connection to the two sides. And then we have two entrances, or an entrance and an exit, of course, for the garage level. If you look on the existing condition sheet, the second page of the plan set, you'll see all the, we located all the twenty-four inch trees and larger along that lane. And I don't think many of them are going to be able to be saved right in this area. But these over here will be. Any questions?
We're gonna be replanting. We're doing replantings.
We're doing replantings. The other thing is the, the four-stem delineation. And I, and I don't know how the town does it, but in the county, it's not required in critical area, there's critical area for it. Take that responsibility. You guys knew that?
Yeah. It still has to go through the critical area process and they're gonna look at those larger trees though, just so you know.
Sure, sure. That was all I wanted to do.
That was actually, one of our questions was, could you explain a little more how l- how big the buffer is? I think it looked, it was thirty-some feet or something and why you can't, just explain why you technically won't be able to save any of those larger growth trees.
So when, when, right now that slope comes straight down about twelve feet to the flat area, we place our building in there, we have to be able to, what I was trying to do is come down the slope, create a bench and then back up to the second floor and bury everything below that.
Gotcha.
But in order to stabilize that slope after I clear some trees out, I've gotta make it two to one or it's never gonna be stable again. Right now, I think it's one to one in some places. One of the clients' objectives is to save as many trees on that hill as we can, but I don't think he wants to save trees that are gonna be problem.
Sure. Yeah, it's always something that we always really like to keep.
Sure.
Especially in town, there's, there's a lot of that because I mean, sometimes they get sick and like a courthouse, on the courthouse lawn, we lost those big trees because they got diseased and whatnot. And yeah, trying to keep as many as possible, but I appreciate the explanation.
If I could interject briefly, we, we did do a critical root analysis of every one of those large trees to see what, what that critical root area was and what sort of modification or trimming of the root we could do to save the ones which are primarily in the southwest corner. We've tried, where we have the space and the ability to adjust the parking envelope and things like that. I, I know that we're eager too, if, if the town is, to reduce the required parking spaces to add more vegetation and saving more trees. But our plan came in to meet the, the criteria that was established in terms of required parking and also to focus on this, what we thought was the most critical issue there, which was the stormwater management. I guess lastly, Jay alluded to doing quality control and development and the easement area. We're, we're hoping that the, everyone could see the wisdom of doing work in an area where there's not as much intense development or traffic as opposed to the Courthouse Road and Fenwick intersection, which would be a massive amount of disruption in terms of the traffic into and out of town, a far longer permitting process and far more cost of all parts involved. So that was one of, in addition to the fact that the natural drainage does come down where we're showing it going also.
So let me, I'll my soapbox here for a minute. To me, this is, this is a, one of the two entryways to Leonardtown. So it's a really important site and a really important plot of land. And I think, to me, the most critical issue is the trees. I, I went out there today and I counted about twenty-four trees that were anywhere between twenty-four inch diameter to, to forty inch in diameter. And from what I'm seeing here, I think probably all but about four of those, you guys are proposing to, to clear cut and then, and then replant with one and a half inch to two inch diameter trees. I don't think that's good for Leonardtown. I don't think that's, I, I think the look of Leonardtown isn't a, you know, big cleared off lot and then a big square building. I, I just am not in favor with this plan. I think you, you've tried to, with the size of the building that you're proposing, you're having to, to do too much damage to the, to what's existing there now that's really important to Leonardtown. So unless, unless there's, you know, maybe, well, I, I was gonna say we could walk out there and show us what trees you're gonna save, but I don't know from looking at this, at the drawings, that there's any point to that because you show that the building is on top of the majority of those trees.
Count of eleven of those twenty-four inch greater trees that are, would have to go make this work, get that drainage to come down and behind the building and then go on over to, had we had the drawing of the pipe. And we were planting eleven, oh, I didn't know what size they were, but we could certainly plant larger trees. We're, or eleven or more, but we're showing the planties to replace the, I know, you know, trees are renewable, they're gonna grow back. But I know, you know, those trees are there, they're just big trees. And, and we certainly looked at it real hard trying to figure out how can we keep them big trees. But the more we looked at it and hit them the slope on that existing hill, the trees are just a hazard to the building. That's one big problem. Drawn steep slopes and the building's gonna be right up along. And the building, unfortunately, we did as best we could. We even made the building smaller and narrower to get the stormwater and get other things to work out properly. So I don't think we're picking down as many trees as you quoted there that you're gonna do.
If I may interject for a second, Doug. So Jay spoke of the bench that runs parallel to the back of that building. And in putting a bench in of that nature, the idea is to direct the water approximately from the rear of the building, both right and left, both those structure boxes that he's proposed. In doing so, that becomes essentially a utility and per our ordinance, it allows them to actually do grading in that back area. The other thing I would point out is, and obviously you were out there and, and I went out there as well, is the slope there that is there, I would suggest that it's not the best slope for maintaining non-erosive velocities from the adjacent lands in that parking lot. So something needs to happen to that slope to stabilize it, in my opinion. Now, the trees is a whole nother thing. We need trees, like you said, so I'm not, I'm agreeing with that. But I do know that that slope back there needs to be stabilized else we're gonna continue to have issues with it later on.
Yeah, it's, it's a sixty-degree slope and...
Right. Yeah, and we're gonna, they're proposing to take it down to roughly thirty-three or less, so.
Well, right now, the trees that are there give a good buffer between this land and what's behind it. Will the trees be planted eventually? Will they grow up?
Well, they'll have to go back and replant that, yeah, because it's in the critical areas. There's a hundred and fifty-year-old trees on it. Yeah.
Yeah.
They were replacing with, with six-foot tall trees this big.
Yes.
You know, it, it's not, it's not even close to comparable to what we're seeing now. And I think that's what is a beautiful entryway to Leonardtown.
But I think you can get trees that, that are trees that are fast growing.
Yeah, we can get trees that...
That you could put back there. Because I was thinking about before the back balconies.
Within three or four years, there'll be some pretty good eyes back there. They'll be overbowed because they're gonna be up on the hill again.
Yeah.
So if they're gonna be coming up over the building within three or four years, I'm not deciding, I don't know what size, I didn't know what size they were, but hybrid, there are trees starting to be faster growing, natives is what we should do to mitigate that. We want, we want to look nice too. I mean, we're not wanting that to look unscathed. The building's gonna cover a lot of it because it's three stories. And so the trees, I think, come up over the second, well, the top floor of the building within three or four years. And I think it's more nice.
And I think that'll be important in your trying to rent those back apartments.
Yes, exactly. We don't want, we have, it's got a lot of planning, which are on our plans.
I have another question. Is this back corner of your parking lot there, is that where the, or well, for there it's down, is that where the dumpster's gonna be for these apartments or?
Yeah, there's one right there is the corner.
It's in the corner and...
Okay.
We did reduce the parking lot size once already to save as many trees, but some of the biggest trees are on that slope right there where he just pointed out with the press pin. So we did, we already shrunk the parking lot once, but like, if you let us skip, skip a couple more parking places, we could even get it tighter. But we want to meet the ordinance on that. And so that's, we, we've anguished over the trees as much.
Yeah, I'm anguishing too.
If it finally add to, you know, in final design, there, there are variables that we're able to manipulate to try to improve the situation. And as part of our critical root analysis of the existing tree cover, some of the clearances were pretty close. We didn't have full access to our soils reports that initially we do now. We may, we may be able to increase things like the depth of the park we're holding in a rain garden to reduce, to pull away from the hill of the building. As part of our work, we do intend to remove all the invasives that really dominate that hillside and try to mitigate the substantial problems with the erosion that are undermining a lot of those older trees. We do hope to plant a little more diversity. Majority of those trees in there right now are oaks and a lot of the oaks are experiencing a lot of distress in, in our particular area. But we have tried to terraced the building to, to lower it and keep it as close to grade level on the lower side and take advantage of the height of the embankment where we won't have to remove trees at the upper portion of the embankment so that those existing trees are gonna be providing a canopy and a screen as well. For people that are walking into town, we, we will have quite a bit of visual interest at the grade level and we'll have a lot of diversity in the species that we're planting there. And, you know, we're, we're a team of tree huggers too. We don't, we aren't out there to, to pull out the chainsaw and go to town.
Happy to have something, um, just keep in mind, I mean, I appreciate that they are trying to save what they can and I know what you're saying, Doug. You have to remember, this is commercial and it is an infill lot that is quite really important to the downtown to, to proceed with those infill as we talked about in the comp plan that we just did. So, I mean, it's kind of something you have to weigh what's, you know, most important. And, but also certainly taking into consideration any of them that you can save. But I know that we spend a lot of money on it with our landscaper, keeping that invasive plant clean back from the edge of Park Avenue right now. So there is definitely a problem with that, which eventually kills off the treatments anyway.
Yeah, I think it seems like they're doing, making sizable reasonable accommodations to make this work and like you said, it'll beautify, it'll take care of some of these other issues that are going on as well, so.
Yeah, I, I agree that a lot needs to have something done with the infill. I just think the size of, of the project is, is requiring all the trees to go away and I think, I don't think that's the right thing to do myself. The other, the other thing, if this does get approved today, the, the line drawing we have on the front of the building, the courthouse, really is just a big, long, straight warehouse looking thing. I'd, I'd like to, to, if this goes forward, to see more features, more interest there than, than just a big, long, straight, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. You, you did such a good job on the Fenwick Street side of, of making it not look like just a long building, like he said, like a warehouse. And I'm sure there's things you can come up with on this side to break it up so it's...
No, it'd be broken up.
Yeah, there's a lot of different things.
And also, we got, we do have a lot of planning that's on the left side of it.
Yeah. Because as you say, people coming into town that way, they're gonna see that long side of the building.
Yeah, we will, we'll, we'll have variations for what these are versus, it's kind of like the side of the building there. It'll have, and just to... You're starting to see it on the left-hand side of the drawing that's up there where we were introducing the material differences.
Right, for contrasting.
The height difference between the top of the roof and the balconies and stuff.
Did they answer your questions or your concerns, I should say, about the drainage?
Well, so we're in concept stage approval. I'm not particularly satisfied with the statement that the water coming down Park Avenue, ponding there, is not the responsibility of that parcel because the water has been designed to go that way anyway. What my problem is...
What my problem is, and, uh, I can't look at the concept plan because there's no vertical information on inverts and things of that nature for the piping. So I can't verify those things at this point, but it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement after the concept plan.
Correct, it's not a requirement of the concept.
Then listen down with them and work on it, because we have a significant study that we paid for GHD to do of that whole area for storm drainage. We have millions of dollars of storm product projects that need to be done. We have, uh, done a significant amount of them in this last expansion, trying to, you know, the old part of town just all drains down. We had significant flooding problems at the plant, and so we, you know, worked on those. And this last expansion, we made a lot of improvements. But I think we can pull that study out and we can try, try to work with them and do what's best for everybody.
So then, being, you being completely satisfied is not a condition of this today?
No, because we're still in concept, they're, they're not required to show that.
I think that's what you're trying to say.
It wouldn't need to be in our motion, so.
That's what I was thinking.
And, and just like the architecture, I mean, it's not required for them to bring it now, but it's good. We like to see it because then they get your feedback on the initial and the design.
Consider later, yeah.
Right, and we appreciate that.
It's hard to see on black and white, I think it shows up a little bit better on the color.
This, this pink's kind of really a totally different make sure.
Yeah, I can also swear with black and get on Fenwick Street, I think it'd be really useful.
Yeah, I'll list to the front and dress it up better and break that.
That's, yeah.
I think it's just.
I'm not, you don't want to look.
Black and white.
That looks way better, yeah.
So, at concept, we are basically approving the size of the building, which is approving what's gonna happen to that lot and, and all the trees, right?
For the most part, yes.
If I may add, uh, one of the reasons that we went with covered parking and underground parking is we, we didn't want to duplicate living residence area with an additional area of surface parking. So what we do in terms of trying to solve these more urban situations is pay the extra money to get the parking inside uh, and have that underneath the pervious area that is for the residences that helps us minimize the surface area that we're, we're creating as well, which helps us, you know, keep more trees and gives us more space for, you know, landscaping or pervious pavements and things like that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, too.
But we're also gonna say parental areas are new, that, that would be another shot at, at trees.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
But we're taking advantage of the trees, so we're not, um, so I don't think this is locking in.
No, that's a lot more.
Locking in, it's more.
Certainly, it's a lot better walking into town or driving into town, uh, to see that landscaping in the front, whereas if you didn't park under there, that would all be parking.
Yes, exactly. You're exactly right.
And, and so that's, and I know the people that live there will appreciate that in the winter time.
And that, that parking, uh, adds to the urban heat index, right? It, uh, it's causing problems for your stormwater management and your stormwater treatment. So, we're, we're trying to do everything that we can to, to make, uh, perform a work to make, to be able to bring, uh, amenity to the community and minimize the impact of the outside.
Now, is there gonna be windows into that parking area at all, so it'll be light in there daylight, or? I couldn't tell.
Windows where it's a garage?
I guess there's.
Yes.
We, we've talked about on the, the east side, uh, Courthouse Drive side, uh, of opening up and away to add some visual interest. Uh, on the west side, uh, downtown side, the building is almost terraced, so. So there won't be really any, and the ends, we, on Fenwick, we have the lower lobby. So, and then on the opposite end of the building, uh, where we have access to grade will provide a community room, uh, a walkout patio and garden here and this, so. We're trying to.
And the garage is fully lit as well.
Part of that, too, is to condition it, you know, so we, we're gonna have pipes first and.
I'm, I'm not on board with this, so I don't know, are you gonna get a second?
What do we do, he won't, he, he won't make a second?
Well, you have to take the vote.
You have to take the vote.
Yeah.
You have to vote, and you can vote anyway, so you're gonna have to be part of the.
But we need a second in order to do the vote, right?
Right.
Right, but you have to take the vote, you're just voting, you're seconding the vote.
You have to second and.
So you're just seconding that we're gonna vote on it, not that we're approving it. Then when we vote, you can vote against it.
All right, I move to approve the request for concept site plan for case number two dash twenty-five, Leonardtown Apartments. The condition that ordinance one thirty-two is replaced prior to building permits being issued.
And who seconded that motion?
I mean, Jean can second that, she's a voting girl.
Oh, I can second this, oh, I, you know, oh, I'm a part of the court.
Is there a law?
I mean, I know I can vote, but I didn't know I could second the motion.
Yes.
All right, I'll second that motion.
You have the pass for it.
Okay, then all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, it's two to one. Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, because the, um, the business of the meeting is already in-house. Permits for the month of March, does anybody have any questions about any of those?
May, uh, the board, please.
Thank you.
See anything, I got any questions about?
Thank you, take care. Well, it's all pretty light, pretty light month, pretty light month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna pick up this month, though, I can tell you.
With spring coming, yeah, well, there should be.
Well, so I have eight site plans for minutes that are under review currently, so.
Wow, that's awesome.
Well, we've been on vacation for a few months, here and there. Do you know what's gonna happen to the other half of where the J spot is, where the yard lights have been?
Yeah, I met with Nicole, um, the, the owner, last week or so. Um, they have several ideas, I mean, there's not really something that's been shown, but, um, I know, I can't really say a worn thing that they're talking about, but, um, they have several options that they're looking at. They just, she needs to expand spice a little bit so they're.
Well, that's what I figured, that's the reason.
We're gonna take a little bit of the back part and then, um, have something in the front, in the front area.
Well, my friend, it didn't bother my friend, she loosened the door, she just walks a little farther.
Honey, Dylan's very happy to buy, um.
Yeah, one, they got to stay in town. Any other questions or comments?
Nope, nope.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those favorites they are?
Aye.
Okay.
That was a long one.
Well.